Evening. Welcome to the Tuesday 21 meeting of the Long Meadow School Committee. Per Governor Baker's order, suspend provisions of the open meeting law, General Law Chapter 30A, Section 20. The public will not be allowed to physically access the school committee meeting. School committee is using the Zoom meeting platform to conduct this meeting. LCTV is live streaming on Channel 12, and a recording of the meeting will be posted to the LCTV YouTube channel as soon as possible. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. We will begin with the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under one individual law, liberty and justice for all.
Next up, we have correspondence. Kevin?
Thank you, Ryan. The following correspondence was recorded. Letters Regarding the Instructional Model During the Pandemic from Megan and Kevin Shee on February 19th, from Amanda Orsillak on February 19th, from Christine Hindley on February 21st, from Lisa Taylor Kelly on February 21st, from Laura and Bill Mulderig on February 23rd, from Sarah Canina on February 22nd, from Fran Crass on February 22nd and February 23rd, and from Carrie Anne Frederigo and Robert St. Ammon on March 2nd. An email letter from Ms. Mary Ann Miller dated February 27th requesting to find information regarding the town's vote to change the town charter to allow recall elections. An email letter from Ms. Kaylee Lozato received March 2nd regarding Bay Path University's graduation ceremony. A memo from Mr. Donald Jarvis, Director of CTEC, dated March 2nd regarding the Walter E. Quigley Jr. Student of the Month Award for February. Long Meadow students recognized were: Mary Alice Miranda for Graphic and Visual Design II, Olivia Klezak for Health Assisting I, Hadley Beaumont for Machine Technology I, and Martin Hernandez Vasquez for Twain. That is it for correspondence.
Thank you very much. Our next item of business is a possible recommended motion on our minutes.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the February 23rd, 2021 school committee meeting as presented.
Sir, second. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, go for a vote.
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Next up, we have visitor comments. Do we have any visitors with us this evening that would like to speak? If so... My Mac going, who's on here? Jamie? If there's anyone interested in speaking, you have to use the the reactions button to raise your hand so that we know that you are interested in speaking. Yep. I see the screen says Karina. Go ahead.
Hi, good evening. So my name is Dr. Karina Shone. I am a maternal fetal medicine physician and parent of four Long Meadow children. And I just wanted to echo some of my colleagues' comments from two weeks ago. Dr. Abbott had pretty convincingly supported our children going back to school and at all levels from elementary all through high school. And what we've seen from the pandemic is that as we did not know what transmission would look like, closing schools early on was appropriate. We have now have multiple scientific literary journals that are showing that contact does not increase the transmission rate in schools. And so having them absent from school on Wednesdays in order to clean the schools, I think, is excessive. And I'm very happy to hear that we have new guidance out from the state now for the elementary school children. But I really want to support what Dr. Abbott has said before, that we really need to be bringing back all of our students. And this is all the way through the high school level because we are seeing increased risk in not only the social emotional learning that we are worried about, but true diagnoses of anxiety and depression and suicidal ideation. And I think this is very important to consider when we're talking about the health and safety of our children, is that we are seeing an uptick in these diagnosable conditions. And I really think that having the schools open five days all children is exceptionally important to their growth and health. And I thank you for letting me have that time.
Thank you, doctor. We appreciate it. Anybody else with us this evening looking to speak? Please use the reaction to raise your hand. Seeing none, then move on. School committee announcements and recognitions. Many members, anybody have an announcement or a recognition? Joanna?
Thank you, Ryan. I just wanted to recognize that since yesterday was International Women's Day and March is Women's History Month, I just wanted to take a moment to celebrate some of the young women and girls in our community from our littlest heroines and inspirations like our little Girl Scouts using their leadership and communication skills to sell Girl Scout cookies and do other community service projects, to our middle schoolers crushing it in STEM activities and in athletics, and to our high schoolers providing compassionate community service. I wanted to particularly celebrate Evelyn Humphreys, who is a senior at Long Meadow High School, for her own creating a little piece of history in Women's History Month. She was selected as the inaugural Young Woman of Impact for her leadership and citizenship with, among other things, Girls Incorporated, Rachel's Table, and the Ronald McDonald House. That's an exceptional award. And we celebrate Evelyn along with, again, all of the other young women and girls. It's hard to breathe through this mask. Sorry. Doing amazing things in our community. Thank you.
Well said. Thank you, Joanna. Anybody else? Okay. Move on to our, we don't have any business with guests. Administrative reports. Superintendent?
I'll save. I'll save the, both of my comments for the agenda item relating to in-person learning. Is that more, is that clear? No. Give me a minute. Close some settings here.
All right, folks. Superintendent's going to work on his microphone at the moment. Rep report. Maxim?
Hello. So NHS, the National Honor Society, will be having an induction ceremony for new members this month on the 16th and 18th. It will be in person at the auditorium. The Red Cross Club is having members finish their COVID-19 awareness posters, which cover origins of the virus, mental health during the pandemic, effectiveness of mask wearing, plasma donation, and so on. They'll be picking a few to display around the school for students. Members of the Climate Change Club have been working with Energy and Sustainability Committee from the town to plan and publicize the Earth Day cleanup event next month, April 11th, and encouraging students to sign up through Key Club, granting some volunteer hours. And so the Jet Jata will actually be publishing an article about that hopefully this week. And we've been so, the Jet Jata has been slowly expanding the reach of social media accounts, and it's been driving more traffic to the Jet Jata website. And that's all for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Maxim. Do we have any reports from the other, from the ad hoc committees? No. Jamie, nothing? Okay. Are we going to switch nine and 10, Tom? Or do you want to do nine? Go for it. All right. Next up is Finance Sub.
Can you hear me? Diane, can I speak? I don't know if I'm unauthorized. Yeah, you can hear me? Okay. So tonight on your agenda are a couple budget transfers. The first one is a consideration for the first general fund transfer for the FY21 budget. Most of the transfers on tonight's proposed document are related to salaries, shortfalls in lines where we've had staffing changes and/or we've had to add positions due to the increase of in-person learning. That's kind of progressed this year. So this is the first one, and we're taking funds from available lines within the budget. I suspect we'll have additional transfers in the general fund, but at this point, we just wanted to put forward a request for to address those salary lines based on staffing changes that have occurred so far to date. And it was recommended at this evening's Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approve it.
Thank you. Jamie, you have anything else to add? Or should we move to the see if there's any questions? There's a recommended motion in case anybody's interested.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approve the FY21 budget transfers as indicated in the document titled FY21 Budget Transfers Number One, dated March 9th, 2021.
Sir, second?
Second.
Sir, discussion. Anybody have any questions? Okay. Seeing none, I'll call for a vote on that motion. Suzie?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And Nicole?
Yes.
And yes for me. Motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next item is a budget transfer related to our grants and special revenues. This would be the third revision that we are making to the FY21 budget. There are some grants that are being, that are new, being recognized in this budget transfer. But going through the list, we have the Title I, I'm sorry, the IDA grant. We are receiving an increase of $3,247. We have the Special Ed Early Childhood Grant with an increase of $36. The Special Ed Program Improvement Grant, which is new for FY21. So it is recognizing the full award amount of $20,425. We have a preschool grant for $2,072. We are proposing some reallocation of the Drug-Free Community Grant, but no change in the total award. There's an increase in the Medco grant of $4,443. And we are recognizing a coronavirus nutrition grant for $3,041.71. And on the back of the document is a state grant. It's called the SWIG grant for $21,000, which provided money to install automated water refill stations at the middle schools. So the total change to the budget would be an increase of $54,266.71 if the recommended transfers are approved. And Finance Sub did review this and recommended it tonight also.
So recommended motion in the agenda, and then we can maybe have a discussion if anyone has any questions.
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee approve the FY21 Grants and Special Revenue revisions as indicated in the document titled FY21 Grants and Special Revenues Revision Number Three, dated March 9th, 2021.
Sir, second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Joanna?
Joanna?
Thank you, Tom. Thank you. Tom, what's the, what was the COVID nutritional? Was that like a?
So the state sent out some money out of the COVID grant that they received from the federal government earlier this year to assist districts, knowing that the food service programs in many districts has been affected by either the model that a number of districts are working on their hybrid model that they are recognizing that most of the programs are struggling financially. So, and based on participation, they came up with a formula to allocate some money to help alleviate some of those financial constraints districts are incurring in their food service program.
Great. Thank you, Tom.
Are there any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for... Is it sounding good right now? My, or is it just in my own? Okay. For a vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And yes for me. The motion passes seven zero.
Finance Sub also considered some fees for next year. So we discussed the out-of-state tuition rate that the district can set for students who might want to attend school in Long Meadow from another state. We are allowed to charge up to our per-student expenditure amount. In your packet, I did include a document that shows a three-year trend with 2019 being the most recent data that is available on the state's website. The current rate is $15,248. If the committee were to decide to move it up to the most recent data or per-student expenditure amount, it would be $15,664. That is the maximum we could charge for an out-of-state tuition for a student who wants to attend Long Meadow. We haven't had this situation in a number of years, but we have been contacted by a family who is considering about coming next year, was wondering what the rate would be. So we told them we would let them know soon as the school committee sets a rate for next year. We did also discuss a number of other fees. We're probably going to continue dialogue at our next meeting with some of those before we bring them forward to the school committee. So the only one that Finance Sub recommended moving forward with tonight would be the setting of the out-of-state tuition rate. And they did recommend it being set at that rate of $15,664.
There's a possible motion?
I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee set the out-of-state tuition rate to $15,664 for the 2021-2022 school year. Did I get that number right?
You did.
Okay.
Second.
Tom, can you just remind us why somebody from out of state would be able to attend Long Meadow schools?
The state allows for districts to accept students in from other states, but not from other communities in Massachusetts. Because we participate in the school choice program in Massachusetts, we open up slots where students can apply and potentially get accepted through a lottery for open slots we have. But the regulations are a little different for accepting students from out of state. Why they might choose to, you know, it's hard to say why families look at Long Meadow as, you know, a good school system and an opportunity for their student to receive a great education.
And again, just to make sure that I'm clear on this, they apply, we don't have to accept them.
Correct. There is a process that we would look at in terms of the application of the student and so on.
Great question. Anyone else? Let's see, any other questions? So we'll call for a vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And yes for me. Passes seven zero.
So the next item on your agenda is consideration of increasing the hourly rate for our lunch monitors and summer custodian temporary positions. Historically, they then increased to the minimum wage. The minimum wage this year went up on January 1st to $13.50. Those rates are currently being paid at the previous minimum wage, which was $12.75. So Finance Sub did discuss this, I believe, a few months ago. Based on a normal year when we're incurring all of those costs, the increase would be about $5,000 for all of the positions for the year. And so we're bringing forward tonight to you a request to increase the rate for those two positions to the current minimum wage of $13. And, or actually, I think what we decided was to increase it each time the minimum wage goes up so we don't have to come back and vote it. So next year on January 1st, it'll go up to 14, 25, and the year after it'll go to $15. And then that's the last increase planned, at least as of right now. So it would prevent, say, the school committee from having to vote it again in the next two years. And it would be retroactive to January 1st of 2021.
The recommended motion, if anyone's interested?
I'm looking at the recommended motion, and it doesn't really reflect what Tom just said, which is the fact that it would be set to the minimum wage. So would you like me to rework? Should I rework the motion? Okay. I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee set the hourly wage for lunch. Oh, no, you do have it. I'm sorry. My bad. Set the hourly wage for lunch monitors and summer custodians to the state minimum wage, retroactively to January 1st, 2021. My apologies.
Second. I have a question, Tom. When you were describing this, you mentioned it would be for two more years, but that's not in the motion. Do we need to say that, or is that automatic somehow? And I just don't understand it.
I think maybe we want to just revise it slightly to say to set the rate to match the minimum wage as it increases and also have it retroactive to January 1st, 2021.
Are we going to have a sunset, or we're just going to let it go? I'm just asking the question because you were talking about...
Yeah. I think the thought with setting it to the minimum wage would address it for the next two years without having to come back and have school committee increase it those two years. I think after that, if it, if there's proposals at the state to increase it, we'd probably come back and request you to approve it based on the minimum wage change, if there isn't any at that point. I'm not aware of an increase after the $15, but it doesn't mean it won't happen once we get there in 2024. Yeah. And I think that was what we were proposing, that those positions get paid the minimum wage. And as it increases, the rate will go up. If it doesn't increase, they're not necessarily going to see an increase unless we would bring it forward to you to propose an increase to.
Question? Kevin?
I think I asked this last year when this came up. So humor me. We don't have to pay people minimum wage? For real?
You are correct, Kevin. Municipalities are exempt from paying the minimum wage rate. We have historically been doing that, which is why this motion is in front of you tonight. But you are not districts, so municipalities are not bound by biding to that, that rate.
Yeah, Ryan, I was going to ask the same thing that you had asked. I think I'm still not clear on what is, are we changing the motion?
As we're in the motion, you try to minimum wage period.
And it's the way Suzie said it, it's the minimum wage?
Yes. I just misread it at first. But Tom did suggest adding the two words, match the minimum, or the one word, match the minimum wage.
Okay. Sorry, I must have missed it myself. Thank you.
He made that suggestion. So did anybody second?
Kevin?
Okay. So what do we do now?
Amend the motion.
Okay. So we have to, I have to make a motion to amend. Okay. I make a motion to amend the previous motion to add the word "match" just before...
After two and before the?
Yes. Yes.
After two and before the?
Kevin, would you like to second that motion?
Second.
Yes.
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Joanna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And Nicole?
Yes.
And yes for me. Motion passes seven zero.
I think we're going to table the substitute rate. Jamie, do you want to take that up? We're bringing... We're bringing it forward at the next meeting.
I think Diane's trying to get our attention. I think maybe we only voted on the amendment to the motion, right? So now we need a vote on the amended motion. Thank you, Diane.
Now we're going to vote on the amended motion.
Yes.
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 Deanna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
So Jamie clarified formally, we are moving forward with the next item. So Finance Sub did discuss the sub-rate. Currently, we are paying teachers at a eighty-dollar-per-day rate. And paras are paid at a rate of either sixty-five or fifty, depending upon the level, the position they are substituting for. What came out of Finance Sub was a recommendation to increase the teacher daily sub-rate to one hundred dollars and to increase the para-rate to eighty-five dollars at a flat rate for either position. So the minimum would be eighty-five dollars, no matter which sub-position you are filling in for. We looked back at a little historical data from 2019. We estimated that it would be about fifty thousand or so, based on the amount of absences that year, or the number of subs. We did include an increase, I believe, of about twenty-six thousand in FY22 budget. But the number is flexible in terms of, or fluid in terms of how many subs we use each year. So it's not a hard number, exactly what the cost will be. It's just an estimate of what happened prior with the amount of subs we had.
Somebody would like to make the recommended motion?
The motion can't be made if it's not, if we don't have an effective date? Or I can make the motion without it?
I mean, you can make it effective today.
Okay. All right. I move on the recommendation of the Finance Subcommittee that the school committee set the daily rate for substitute teachers to one hundred dollars a day and for para educator substitutes to eighty-five dollars a day, effective on March ninth, 2021.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Kevin?
Just curious how this compares to surrounding towns for their rates for substitute teachers?
Well, that was something we did discuss at Finance Sub. I would say it's probably competitive and maybe at the higher end. I think most districts are looking at their rates now with the struggles of finding subs. I would say it's probably reflective of the rate across the state. Most districts are at ninety to a hundred dollars, if not more. But we'd say in the local area, they're anywhere from eighty to a hundred for a teacher daily sub-rate.
Thank you. Deanna?
That was my question. Thank you.
Sorry you stole it from me. Kevin does that. Any other questions? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Bradman?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Deanna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
Yes for me. That motion passes seven zero.
Thank you. The next item is a consideration for refunds for some fees that were paid earlier this year. So I think the best way to handle it would be kind of in three different considerations. The first would be related to transportation or busing fees. So this year, our busing was limited for students who lived more than two miles from their home to school. And we are legally required to transport students who are in grades K through six, who live more than two miles. So in grades K, seven through twelve, we had thirty-five students who paid the two hundred and thirty-five-dollar fee. Finance Sub recommended a refund of fifty percent of that fee, which would be about four thousand dollars in fees that we would refund based on the hybrid model that was in effect and the number of remote days, even with the potential of more in-person learning coming on later this spring. We felt it kind of evened out based on maybe about fifty percent of the year, so utilizing the service or being available to them. So that is one consideration. The second is related to the two athletic seasons that occurred this year. So Fall One, the proposal would be to recommend a refund of fifty percent of the user fee that individuals paid for the Fall One season. Again, there were a number of teams that only were able to compete in a portion of the scheduled season based on a number of COVID-related issues, on top of the fact that the season itself was shortened compared to prior years. And then for the winter season, the proposal would be a refund of twenty-five percent, with one exception, and that being for the boys' junior varsity hockey team, which we were proposing fifty percent. And the difference from Fall One to Winter, and then the boys' JV team for hockey, is that the winter season were able to participate in pretty much all of their scheduled games. But it was definitely less than what they normally would have played in a regular season. And the season itself was a little shorter than what it normally would be. And the reason we are proposing a little higher rate for the boys' junior JV team for hockey is that they had limited teams to play against, limited competition, and the number of ice sheets that were available for practices was less than what the varsity had available to them. So it only seemed fair to give them a higher refund than what the varsity team was going to receive based on less opportunities to participate. So I did provide Kevin some motions, but those were the recommendations out of Finance Sub.
So Kevin, if we can have some motion, so is it three separate? All right, and then we can discuss each one, one at a time? Go ahead, Kevin.
I move that the school committee approve refunds of fifty percent for bus fees for the 2021 school year.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on bus fees? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Deanna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And yes for me. That passes seven zero.
I move that the school committee approve refunds of fifty percent for athletic user fees for the Fall One season of the 2021 school year.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote.
Yes, yes.
Bradman?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Deanna?
Yes. Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And I abstain? Kevin? Oh, so that was six, and one abstention. Go ahead, Kevin.
I move that the school committee approve refunds of twenty-five percent for athletic user fees for the winter season of the 2021 school year, and a fifty percent refund for the boys' hockey JV user fees for the same season.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, I'll call for a vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Bradman?
Yes.
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 Deanna?
Oh, sorry, yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And yes for me. That one passes seven zero.
Thank you. The last item on the agenda that Finance Sub discussed was the FY22 budget. I believe the superintendent sent something out earlier last week, maybe, in regards to the proposed budget that the town manager presented to the Select Board. Within that budget recommendation is an amount that is about ninety thousand less than what the school committee approved in February. I would say at this point, our position would be to monitor how things go and not take any immediate action. I think there's still uncertainty about what the state budget will end up being. There's also the federal funds that we've talked about during the presentation and how that could impact what our needs are next year. So I think it was just important making sure that everybody understood. There is a public hearing, I believe, tomorrow night. The Select Board and Finance Committee are holding for input in regards to the town manager's budget. But I just wanted to make sure the school committee was aware of what was recommended for our budget for FY22. And that is it, unless there's any questions.
Any other questions for Mr. Maslow? Kevin?
Just curious, Tom, do we know why the ninety thousand dollar cut? Was there a rationale given?
I think some of it was just the projection of revenues that they were working off of. Maybe didn't hit the mark. And so they had to look at where increases were, not only in the school budget, but I think across all the requests that the towns departments made, and adjust accordingly as best they could to fit within their projected revenues. We did have a conversation with them, I think, right around, right after we approved our budget, about what challenges they were still facing. They were still waiting for some additional numbers to come in. But I think they were just trying to make all the pieces fit based on the revenue projections they have for next year.
Thanks, Tom. And so just to be clear, it wasn't, we don't like this one thing that's ninety thousand dollars? That wasn't it at all?
No.
Okay.
The school committee actually has line item authority. The Select Board can't necessarily say you can't appropriate it for that. They only have basically authority over the bottom-line appropriation to the school committee, to the school department.
Thank you. Any other questions? I don't see any. Thank you, Mr. Maslow. Next up, we have Policy Sub.
How about now? Okay, great. So we have had on your agenda for a few meetings now the policies that were reviewed and recommended from the Policy Subcommittee, specifically a new policy ACAB relating to sexual harassment, and a policy ACAC relating to harassment more generally. These are policies that were recommended to us by our legal counsel and came from some changes to Title IX and some recommendations from the Mass Attorney General's Office. So this brings us, it gives us a more robust sexual harassment policy. And it also allows for the removal of policy JBA, which essentially is redundant, given the development of these two other policies. So those have been on the district website for public input. We had received no public input on those policies. So at this point, the school committee could take action on approving those policies.
Thank you. Any questions?
I'm happy to move it. Is it okay if I do that, even though I'm on the Policy Subcommittee?
I can do it. I just had to get to back to. I move that the school committee approve the policies below presented. Policy ACAB, sexual harassment. Policy ACAC, harassment. And approval of policy JBA, student-to-student policy from the policy manual.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion on the policies? Seeing none?
Yes.
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 Kevin?
Yes.
Deanna?
Deanna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And Nicole?
Yes.
Yes for me as well. Curriculum Sub and Email Sub, I've seen no report on my agenda. Is that correct?
Curriculum Sub is meeting next week.
Thank you.
Email, anything for it? I'm going business. We are up to update on the instructional model.
So happy to, once again, provide the committee and the community with an update on the progress that we have made with regard to providing more opportunity for safe in-person learning for students, and also some discussion about potential next steps. So I'll just share my screen here. So this is a milestone calendar that I presented at the last meeting. And again, I won't go through it line by line, but really meant to represent the regular progress we have made in introducing in-person learning, going back to the work that was done last summer and continuing through the fall and into the winter. And so steadily, we've made progress and appreciate the great support that the school committee has provided to this effort and appreciate the partnership that we've had with the administration and with the staff to make this happen as well. And so that brings us to what is sort of coming up more immediately. And this is a reflection of the, some of the plans that we had presented at your last meeting. And so I'm happy to report that much of what we, all of what we had presented at your last meeting will, is actively coming to fruition. And beginning with, on March first, the return of seniors, those who were interested, coming from cohorts A and B, had an opportunity to return for four days of in-person learning. And then grades ten, eleven, and nine, they will begin, have begun having the opportunity for in-person learning at the high school as well. You'll see shortly the, some of the details relating to grade five and the projection that on March fifteenth, that grade five will begin with in-person learning for students from cohorts A and B. And then we could talk a little bit about the feasibility study that has happened at grade six and the progress we have made to return grade six students for four days of in-person learning on March twenty-second. So this is a pie graph that projects out to March twenty-second. And if we were to fold in the students that we are expecting to return at sixth grade and then also include the students at grades five and six, and then in grades nine through twelve, we would see that over sixty percent of our students have the opportunity to access four to five days of in-person learning. And then another close to twenty percent are still joining us on a two-day hybrid basis. I would say that many of the students, about a hundred and seventy or so of the students in the blue slice of that pie chart are coming to Long Meadow High two days per week by their own choice. So we've made steady progress. I'm really pleased that we've been able to grow the yellow slice of this pie and see that we have been able to safely offer more and more students opportunities for in-person learning. And when we reflect back at where we were back on February twenty-second, February twenty-second was the date that grade four students started with in-person learning, four days per week. And so you'll see how dramatic a shift we have made, the dramatic improvements we've made in a very short amount of time in terms of providing additional students with in-person learning. So back prior to February twenty-second, I think we were at around a thousand students or so, maybe just under, and now we're looking at, you know, over seventeen hundred students having the opportunity to join us four to five days a week. Most of, admittedly, most of the students being with us four days per week. The remote cohort, you'll see that it has decreased slightly. We expect that it will continue to decrease, and we'll touch on that shortly. You have on your desks in front of you the details associated with the number of students that are attending two days per week in either Cohort A or B, the number of students that are remaining in, that are in Cohort C, a fully remote cohort, and the number of students that are with us in Cohort C. number of students that are with us in Cohort E, four days per week. We have a small number of students, you'll see, that are engaged in a, in a fully, a fully virtual program provided by outside providers. So, you know, these are the numbers that we're, we're regularly tracking. And I would say that this, the numbers that you see are as of March 5th, the number of remote students has probably declined slightly since, since this was pulled from our student information system. So looking at grades 4 and 5, we note that grade 4, you know that grade 4 has started with in-person learning. And we have a dedicated Cohort C teacher in, in grade 4, 5th grade. Again, the, the dedicated Cohort C learning community is up and running at center in Wolf Swamp. The Blueberry Hills students will join that, that remote Cohort C class on March 15th. But we are, are well positioned to start up with in-person learning for 5th grade, four days per week at, at, at all three elementary schools. So we're, again, excited at the, at the progress that we've made. And, and I, I would suggest that we're really kind of leading the way in terms of many of the schools that, that we compare ourselves to in terms of the amount of in-person learning that we have been able to provide. At the middle school, this is an update on some of the feasibility work that we have undertaken in order to return students at grade 6 on March 22nd. And you'll see that the number of students that have opted for four days per week of learning at both Glenbrook and Williams, a, a small number of students in both schools have requested that they remain in the remote Cohort C for the third trimester. And then the, the principals are actively exploring how they can repurpose rooms and rearrange the lunchroom, rearrange lunch lines. We have had storage units delivered. There's a lot of equipment that we have to move around and, and put into storage in order to make this happen as well. Mr. Maslow had to step out, but he's been instrumental in, in making sure that sort of the operational aspects of this are, are pulled off. And then just this after, or just yesterday, rather, our principals sent out a form to Cohort C students in grades 7 and 8, asking them to elect in-person or remote learning for the third trimester. So that election form, that survey has been distributed. I believe that the, it's either Thursday or Friday, that, that information needs to be received from families. Once that's received, we'll have a better idea of families' intentions and we'll be in a better position to understand how we might take the next steps with offering in-person learning for our, our students in grades 7 and 8. And, and certainly, as we explain to, to parents, that the, the timing and implementation of any plan is dependent on evolving guidance, health metrics, the, the decisions of this committee, and then also any direction that we might receive from the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education, which has been significant lately, and we'll talk about that shortly. We can, we, we have, this, this is information that was presented at your last meeting, but I left it in the slide deck in case it comes up in our discussion. But it, it demonstrates for us the, the challenge of returning our middle school students even at a, even if we were to observe a three-foot distance standard. You'll see that there are many sections that we would not be able to, we would not be able to absorb even at that three-foot standard. Now, this, these calculations were put together prior to the development of plans for grade 6. And so we would need to revisit these numbers as we move forward with the grade 6 plan. So that, these are the, the Williams numbers and how many sections that we could get in at various distance standards. And then at Glenbrook, you'll see a similar pattern. Perhaps there's, there's more wiggle room if a number of students chose to remain in Cohort C. You'll see that the, are, the feasibility of incorporating all of our students and the number of sections that we've identified at, at six foot, four foot, and a three-foot At the high school, we, again, we had offered all students, every student at Long Meadow High has now been offered, in cohorts A and B, has been offered the opportunity to return for in-person learning four days per week. And so many students have taken us up on that offer. And you'll see at grade 12, 84 students started four days per week on March 1. 69 students have started at grade 10 tomorrow, excuse me, Thursday. 86 students will start at grade 11. And next, next week, we will be welcoming back our freshmen for four days per week in grades 9 through 12. So again, every student who in, in cohorts A and B, who chooses, who wants to attend four days per week, has the option to do so. To the high school's credit, they even have given families the option of remaining in the traditional hybrid pattern with, with two days, attending in-person, two days per week. And you'll see that 171 students from cohorts A and B have chosen to access two days per week rather than the full four days that was available to them. And then, of course, we still have, as you understand, the, a number of students, 347 students, who are in the fully remote cohort, Cohort C. And that pattern is in place until April 9th, when the high school third quarter ends. And then after that, we will need to make some decisions about how to honor any requests from families who would like to come out of Cohort C into in-person learning beginning in the fourth quarter. And so Principal Landers has issued an election form that went out this afternoon. He has sent some correspondence to Cohort C families, asking them of what their intention would be, and it has to be a binding intention, what their intention would be for the fourth quarter. So by the end of this week, we will have a, an understanding of the number of families that would be interested in in-person learning coming out of Cohort C at the high school. So that's, that's at the end of this week. We'll know that at the high school. And again, we'll also know that at the end of this week, what the intentions of 7th and 8th grade Cohort C families are as well. So things are, are, you know, we're, as we, as we work hard to welcome additional students for in-person learning, we're also planning forward and, and thinking about how, what the next steps might look like. And at the high school, there was, you recall some discussion at the, your meeting about the use of the overflow room. And so this is to accommodate students who are in classrooms that cannot accommodate all learners at that six-foot distance standard. There is the, I'm pleased to report that the overflow room will be used in, in very limited circumstances. Only 94 students out of, you know, about 650 or so that are in person will need to experience an overflow room. And even when that is the case, it would be simply no more than one block per day per week. So we're, I'm pleased to report that we, under the current arrangement, we do not expect that many students will need to be in the overflow room. And we certainly don't expect that students will find themselves in the overflow room for more than one block per day per week. So I know that was an important concern of the committees and a credit to Principal Landers and Principal Estradios, or Assistant Principal Estradios and Dunkerly for the Herculean effort that they made to schedule all those students back into Long Meadow High School. And so that's where we are with Long Meadow High School. Now, since your last meeting, and frankly, even over the last three or four days, a lot has changed. And as this committee is very much aware, last Friday, the Massachusetts Board of Elementary and Secondary Education granted Commissioner Riley the authority to determine when hybrid and remote learning models would no longer count for structured learning time. So that was sort of breaking news on Friday. I'm expecting to learn more in a statewide call that's happening tomorrow. But just this afternoon, and I, and I shared this with the committee, just this afternoon, the department released new guidance. And that new guidance specifically spelled out some upcoming milestones for districts across the state, specifically the expectation that elementary schools be in five days per week effective April 5th, and that middle schools be in five days per week effective Wednesday, April 28th. There was no specific milestone or date attached to the return for high school students, but we can expect that in the weeks ahead. And I think we know, we talked briefly at your last meeting about the, the need to modify the Wednesday schedule. And so those discussions continue. And then, as I mentioned, one of the other variables that we will have a better handle on at the end of this week are the intentions of the remote students in grades 7 through 12. So at the end of this week, we'll know what, what they, what cohort those students are electing for the final trimester at the middle school and the final quarter at the high school. And I did want to note that, you know, none of us have a crystal ball. And, you know, certainly, we have to respond to changing conditions and expectations. But I think all of us anticipate, it's fair to say that we're anticipating a, a full in-person return across all grades next year. That, that has been, that, that certainly is something that's important to us as educators here in Long Meadow Public Schools. And, and I think we're hearing that at the highest levels as well, from the, from the federal government and from Mass DESI as well. So, you know, we've, we've made a lot of progress and yet the, you know, some of the, the guidance is still evolving. Some of the, some of the targets are becoming clearer to us. And you can see we have some important directions that we have to take in the, in the weeks ahead, some important decisions that we have to make. The, you know, I'm giving you the, sort of the headlines from the, the DESI guidance that came out today. And literally, I, I saw Sue reading it, you know, moments before our meeting because it, it, it has only just come out. So we're still trying to understand what exactly, how this will play out, what exactly is meant by five days per week. We're trying to understand how DESI will respond to districts that might face space constraints. You know, we know that we, we have some space constraints associated with the middle school, even at the, even at that three-foot standard. And so we need to understand, you know, how we can, you know, what the expectations will be and what our options are at, at those grade levels. And so that, that's, you know, I think Chairman Kelly and I were talking about the, the possibility of, the committee has been so gracious with its time and you've sacrificed so much from your, your personal lives to, to lead this effort. But I think it might make sense to schedule a, a meeting between now and your next regularly scheduled meeting to, you know, after we understand what the cohort intentions look like, after we've had a chance to unpack the DESI guidance, after we have participated in some statewide calls to understand how all this can roll out. And frankly, after we have an opportunity to sit down with our partners, with, with our, with the administration, with our educators, just to understand what the implementation of this, this new guidance might look like. Again, it's, it's sort of hot off the presses. Everyone's reading it sort of at the same time. We didn't, we didn't have any sneak preview on this. Came out this afternoon and, and we're truly trying to understand what the new DESI expectations mean for us. The key, the key component of all this relates to structured learning time, and that's the authority that the Mass Board of Ed gave the commissioner was to make those determinations about what counts as structured learning time. And so we need to understand, you know, where, you know, where we stand relative to the state's expectations on structured learning time. So there's a lot happening. I'd, I'd like to publicly thank, again, our administrators and, and all of our educators for rolling up their sleeves and being involved with the, the efforts that we've made to provide more in-person learning. You know, as, as this work unfolds, it, it frankly, you know, it means that it's all hands on deck in terms of clerical staff, custodial staff, or tech staff, central office admin, school-based admin, teachers. There's, there's a lot that has to happen when we, you know, when we take these steps to provide more in-person learning. You know, the simple act of scheduling children back into the building who have not been in the building for some time requires a lot of thought and a lot of preparation as well. So, you know, a, a, just a, again, an acknowledgement of the, the combined efforts. I think it's been a collaborative effort across the board of families have, have been great partners. The School Committee has led the effort. Our administrators have worked overtime to make this happen and, and our educators and everybody, all the staff at, at each building has, has pitched in to make this happen and to, and to put us in a position where, you know, we, we were looking at over 60% of our learners, 1,700 children, having that opportunity to access four days or more of in-person learning. So happy to answer any questions or give you the best information I have, knowing that a lot of this is evolving. You know, I, I am pleased to report that the, the health metrics continue to work in our favor. The, you'll see that we didn't call on Chief Dearborn tonight intentionally. We wanted to give him a break, but it was reported to us that most recently, we've seen the number of active cases in town in the low teens. And we haven't seen those numbers for months and months and months. And so that's really encouraging news. So we continue to see, we continue to see progress in that area. Our teachers are being creative and, and working hard to find vaccinations for themselves. Reluctant to provide you tonight with any specific numbers on, on the number of educators or staff that, that have had access to the, to a vaccination. But I can tell you that, you know, it's, it's starting to snowball and, and I'm really pleased with how hard they're working. I'm hearing stories of our staff and educators working, waking up at all hours and, you know, and driving to distant places to get vaccinated. So we, we thank them for that. And it's a reflection, frankly, of how important it is to them to, to do their job. So I thank them for that. So that's, you know, that's kind of where things stand. I, I would say finally that, you know, though we have seen a, a decrease in the number of active cases, we, you know, in the last five school days or so, we have had active cases in school. And as the committee is well aware, it has created close contact situations, and there have been students who have had to quarantine as a result of positive cases being in our school buildings. When, when it happens, we respond swiftly. We, we talk to the Board of Health. I think we have our, our routines and protocols down pat at this point, and we, we isolate individuals and quarantine accordingly. And again, knock on wood, we're, we're really fortunate that we have not seen any school-based transmission. So that, that also, that continues to be very encouraging and, and supportive of, you know, the work we've done to provide more in-person learning. So I've gone on and on too much, but it's, it's a busy time and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have. time, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
So Riley's, the announcement was for three feet?
Correct, yes.
So that obviously can pose a space situation for our company, which was on one of the slides. I want to make sure people understand that he's reiterating the expectation of three feet. And the second thing is that Cohort C is still available to any families who don't want to send their kids. The common learning rule is, we have to be providing the five days so people can have that.
Perfect, yes. Yep. And I'd say to supplement that, my quick review of the guidance this afternoon, I did note that the six-foot standard remains during the lunch period for students who are eating. So, that also is something that we have to think through and be creative about if, you know, as long as that six-foot standard remains while students are eating. But thank you for emphasizing that, Ryan, because I do want to acknowledge that families will still, despite the DESI announcement, families will still have the option to access fully remote learning at any time.
And last one, and then I'll call in at 8:30. You're getting clarification hopefully tomorrow, because I can imagine there were 360 some districts out, 360 different situations.
Yeah.
So you all will be getting clarification tomorrow on a lot of this stuff.
Yeah.
Questions?
Yes, thank you, Marty. I appreciate that. I appreciate knowing all the details of what's happening, and I know it's been a lot of work, and we've seen the emails go out, and we've seen all the changes being made, and I'm very appreciative of everybody's efforts. I'm hoping that tomorrow, if it's possible, and this is just my opinion, if you can get a sense from the folks at the state, what their rationale is for wanting to conduct statewide testing, given that we're putting all this effort to getting our kids back in school and instruction, and then we're going to shut down for a week and have state testing to find out how much learning loss has taken place, when in fact, that's the whole point of getting them back in school to get them instruction. So, I'm kind of, you know, it boggles my mind that, you know, what the commissioner is suggesting is that everybody come back to school, and then we're going to take a week to test.
I think many of our educators are probably applauding right now, and our administrators, because I think we agree with you that, you know, especially at a time when running a standardized test is especially challenging, doing it with the safety guidelines that will remain in place. And the high school is especially challenged in that this year, they'll be testing not just 10th graders, but 10th and 11th graders. So, it's the students who didn't have an opportunity to take the test last year. So, it's actually, in some respects, more testing. Now, they have postponed it, I believe, at the K-8 level. You have to help me out, Sue. And perhaps, you know, perhaps it will get postponed further into the fall. I have heard some conversation around that. But right now, we are, we have to go ahead and plan for the administration of those tests, and that, you know, as anybody who understands, you know, test administration, to organize a test for hundreds of students under testing conditions and under safety guidelines is really, really challenging. So, thank you for that.
Yeah, I fully endorse any push you want to give in that direction. I had something else, but it's gone. But hopefully, it'll come back later. But yeah, and I'm, you know, if this, if we find it's necessary, I'm happy to write a letter on behalf of the school committee for, if we do meet next week, you know, to present and send on behalf of the school committee in the public schools, because this is, it really is insane.
To get rid of M-CAS?
Yes.
Yeah, forever.
To get rid of it, yes.
Other questions for Marty? Kevin?
Not so much a question, but a comment. I just want to, you know, thank Marty, the whole leadership team, the principals, assistant principals, everybody involved, the teachers, the families. Just thinking about where we would be if we hadn't been so aggressive at bringing kids back in, and this announcement came out, oh yeah, next month, you got to have everybody back in. It would be a disaster, I think. So, I just real thank you to everybody who has helped put us in this position where I actually think that, you know, we're in a really good spot, and we're going to be able to figure this out. It's not going to be easy. It hasn't been easy. People have been going above and beyond everywhere. But just, again, a big thank you, and Marty.
Thank you. Thank you.
Suzie, remember your question?
My question. Yeah, it's another ask of the superintendent on your call tomorrow is to ask, you know, why in a state like Connecticut can teachers get their vaccinations right on site, and our teachers have to schedule time, take time off of work to go get their vaccinations in Massachusetts? What, I don't understand, if it's that important that teachers need to be here and our kids need to be here, then why can't we make it available to them on site?
I will look for the opportunity to ask that.
Thank you.
Excellent question. And, you know, double so, because it's hard if you're an educator to watch a computer and watch a screen refresh while you're trying to teach students at home and in person. And so, it's very hard for an educator to take time out of their day to schedule that. So, thank you for that. I suspect that question will be on the minds of many people on that call tomorrow.
Thank you. Needless to say, I think everybody truly appreciates it. One thing I would say is lunches, which that has always been such a bottleneck. I am a big proponent of pushing forward and finding outdoor dining. If we have the heat, do whatever we have to do, and, you know, spend whatever money we got to spend in the short term to get more kids back. So, big proponent of that, whatever you need to do. I just don't want that to be some bottleneck to where we can't get more kids back, for it to come back to lunches where we have to have some different requirement.
Is there any other options out there?
Not letting lunch hold us back and spending the money where we need to spend it if we need to do outdoor seating to make it work. So, that's my two cents on it. No real questions.
So, for folks at home, we are actively pursuing tents. We want some, you know, some very strong structured tents, and we also will take, you know, we're also trying to get our hands on even tents that just allow for some more traditional cover. Mrs. Hutton described for me today that they took advantage of the beautiful weather today, and they took their fourth graders out. And, you know, to listen to her describe the joy that the children experienced going outside and eating in the sun, and it was great. So, we don't want lunch to be a bottleneck, and we'll continue to try to identify satellite spaces, and outdoor dining will certainly be, you know, part of our planning. Obviously, you know, it's tough to hang your hat on that completely because you have inclement weather even in April, May, and June.
Thanks, Ryan. Yeah, I just wanted to add to, Suzie, thanks for bringing up the MCAS thing, and superintendent, since she did bring it up, and since you might be mentioning it to the commissioner tomorrow, I also would just throw in there, you know, I'm a public school educator who deals with the mental health of children, and everybody's been talking about the mental health of children, and I just wonder if you can remind him the significant mental health anxiety, negative impacts that MCAS testing has on kids.
Thank you.
I don't have a question, but I would like to add on to what Gianna was just saying about the importance of emphasizing that when we are concerned about social, emotional wellbeing and getting students back in person, in part to address those social, emotional needs of students, that then taking that time to focus on a few weeks' worth of testing does feel like not the best move in that moment. So, any push we can make to reconsider testing in the spring would be very supportive of.
Any other question?
I was just wondering if the students who initially chose, I know it was just recently at the high school, the students chose to go back four days or two days. It seemed like the email from Mr. Landers went out to the Cohort C students. I'm just wondering, what if there's a couple within that 171 that chose the two-day option that are now wishing they chose the four-day option? Will they have that opportunity for quarter four? I mean, it sounds silly to send another survey because you just surveyed them.
Right.
But I'm just wondering if, I want to make sure we don't miss anybody.
I think the, when the, I will double check with Principal Landers on that. I think when the cohort, when that cohort election forum went out several weeks ago, they were asked to make the decision that would carry them through term three.
Right.
So, the question would be then, during term four, would those 171 students have the opportunity to go four days per week? Is that, that's your question?
Right, just in case. I'm sure it's, the majority still have the same answer, you know, they had a couple of weeks ago. But just in case, even if there's a handful, we want to make sure that we get to them, and also, so that it gives the admin plenty of time, if that even is possible, because they've done so much in all the schools in seemingly so little time. But as much time as we can, so that they can prepare for quarter four.
For sure, yeah. So, if it is the committee's intention to have a meeting next week, then that's something we could report back to you on. For sure.
Thank you.
I have two questions that are very unrelated to each other. The first is related to spacing. I know we did the feasibility studies for six feet, four feet, three feet at the middle school level. As we get closer to that potential return date for the high school, how are we situated there? Is the three-foot workable across all those grades? Do we have any answers for that?
We do. If the, if three-foot were the chosen standard at the high school, we would be able to accommodate in nearly all situations, the number of students who are assigned to each classroom. So, it wouldn't, I wouldn't anticipate that it will be a barrier. There might be some movement, some rescheduling of the largest classes to find more ideal spaces, but in nearly all cases, we would be able to accommodate at three feet at the high school. You know, clearly, the middle school is the greater challenge for us right now.
Yeah, understandably. Thank you. Mind if I do a second one, Ryan? That's good, okay. The other one, again, totally unrelated. Have you, if this has not come up yet, can it also come up tomorrow to discuss possible plans for MCAS if it is moving forward, what that might look like for some of our Cohort C students, if there are plans and works on that front as well?
As it currently stands, Cohort C needs to be given the opportunity to come in to take the MCAS test. So, that offer will be extended. I think, in fairness, maybe to the folks at DESI, what they might say is they need some wiggle room from the federal government on standardized testing and accountability expectations that are built into federal law. So, you know, they postponed it to May and June, and perhaps that's a signal that it will be postponed further to next fall. That would be a welcome relief, I would say, to our administrators and educators, and I suspect students who, you know, just want some level of normalcy.
So, what do you folks think about having a meeting next Tuesday to report about the most recent?
That's what it is, on their interest of coming back for days, grade seven and eight being the most important ones, obviously. Yes, thumbs up. We're interested. Kevin, you have a question?
I'm just commenting that I'm out on, like, I have a work thing from 7:00 to 10:00 PM, so I won't be here if you do meet. It sounds like a great idea, but unfortunately, I won't be here.
Anybody else have a problem with next Tuesday, the 16th?
So, if we have a meeting on the 16th, do we need to have the meeting on the next week? Is the question.
Might ask Diane if there's anything pressing coming up on the agenda. So, there may be some issues that are not related to in-person learning and COVID that we need to tackle. So, I would say that might be TBD.
We can look into that rather than put Diane in the spotlight, what she's looking at.
And just to clarify, the point of this next Tuesday would be, I guess, to report to see if we can...
If you are going to propose something for seven, eight, three, that's really the point?
Yeah, I think we... You know, there's so many variables that we were presented with in the last few days, and are still trying to figure out the DESI guidance, the specific implementation of that guidance, the cohort election forms that we will collect by the end of this week. So, I think, you know, it's, and then some additional time for additional conversations with those, you know, the families that are affected, and with the educators that are involved with this as well, and our admin team. So, I haven't even sat down with the admin team to go over this DESI guidance. So, I think it's really, it's those things that we just need some time to understand and figure out how it applies to us and what it might mean for us, what our next steps might be.
So, you folks see value, at least in the idea of signing up the one for next week? Well, I have a meeting next Tuesday. Any other questions on the update? Marty, is there any more, or is that it?
All right. So, we don't have any new business, so we have a possible motion.
Happy to take that, Ryan. I move that the school committee meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, Purpose 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, H, and Purpose 7, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings, not to reconvene into open session.
Second.
Sorry, Ryan, I don't know, I don't really know how to do this, but I realize I voted on a motion, the athletic fee. I realize I have two kids that did a fall sport, so that I would make, I would get a refund. So, I don't know what to do.
All right, I missed that memo.
Well, you can choose to reconsider that vote and then revote it.
Thank you. That would still be four people voting with the three of us abstaining. So, I want to make the motion to reconsider that motion. to make the motion to reconsider that motion.
Should I just read the motion again?
You have to vote to reconsider. So if somebody has to move that they want to reconsider the vote on the fall athletics, that has to be seconded, and then you can reconsider it.
She asked what we just did, didn't we just second?
She didn't second it.
I'm sorry?
I thought she did.
Oh, she did, that's right, yes. Oh, I thought I had to do that to have the discussion about, sorry.
I can't read it here. Marty, I'm going to mute you. When you're unmuted, I can't hear Jamie.
I think we need to resend. We don't want to do it. We can go into executive session. We need to address that before we go and redo that.
We're in discussion about a comparison. We've got to the point of discussion. We didn't have time going into executive session. Right? Diane, you want to run on that one?
You haven't voted on that, so they can just.
We can start going in. All right.
Yeah.
So we need to reconsider that.
I move that we reconsider the motion to approve refunds of 50% for athletic user fees for the fall one season of the 2021 school year.
Second to that?
Second.
Any discussion? Saying we're going to reconsider that? Suzie?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Thanks. Yes for me? I'm sorry, Nicole didn't call you.
Yes.
And yes for me. So it's 7-0 to reconsider. So now Kevin, reread it.
I move that the school committee approve refunds of 50% for athletic user fees for the fall one season of the 2021 school year.
Second to that?
Yes, second.
Thank you, and discussion of those of us who receive a benefit from this to abstain. Brown?
Yes.
Yes.
Gianna?
Abstain.
Yes. Nicole?
Abstain.
And abstain for me. So that passes four with three abstentions. Four yes, three abstentions. Now we are still in discussion of the move to executive session. Is there any more discussion on that?
Thank you for your patience.
Appreciate that, guys.
We will vote on the move to executive. Oh, I got to reread it. Hold on. Motion is to meet in executive session pursuant to Mass General Law, Chapter 38, Section 21A, Purpose 2, to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, B, C, D, E, F, H, and Purpose 7, consideration of release of executive session minutes of previous meetings, not to reconvene into open session. Roll call vote. Suzie?
Yes.
Brown?
Yes.
Kevin?
Yes.
Gianna? Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Nicole?
Yes.
And yes for me. That passes 7-0. We are adjourned from public session and going into executive session. Thank you.